Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, first and foremost, thank you. I appreciate that. Looking forward to working as chief of police with the Albert Police Department. Now, to answer your question in regards to the gang unit. The gang unit is actually staying within SID. They're not being disbanded. What they're doing is we're putting them in within other units within SID. And they still will be doing gang cases. They still will be going out natively, taking care of gang problems, gang issues. They'll remain there until we're able to get enough bodies in there to formulate a bigger gang unit. So we're not disbanded whatsoever.
Thank you.
Counselors. Thank you. And Chief, congratulations on you doing so much and hopefully you can have a great partnership with City Albert.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to alert you one of my 50 acronyms. For the people who are listening on TV might not know what SID is. Is that what Special Investigations?
Special Investigations Division. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for some of you. Chief, thank you very much and congratulations again. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I'm going to do a thank you, folks. And I wanted to say thank you to Cultural Services in Betty. I don't know if she's here tonight or not. But Summer Fest, I tell the most recent one here at City Plaza upstairs. I went to attend that and also Motley Crue. Believe it or not, it's one of my favorite groups, although you wouldn't think for this great year that I would be listening to a group like that. But it was really well attended. I think it was well done.
Are there harsher penalties for these police officers because they are supposed to be peace officers? They are in the eye of the media at all. And they should be by example, setting this example like this. This is not good. It's not good. And I'm done. Thank you.
Peggy Bockham followed by Gina Vargas, followed by Teresa Brown. Ms. Bockham, just one more. There's apparently some of the speakers in the back. I know some of you that are sitting in the back of the chambers can't hear too well. And we are working on that. There are folks that are working on that to try and get that fixed. And so we apologize. And if you're speaking at the podium as well as the counselors, we'll try to speak into the mic and speak as loud as we can in the meantime until those speakers are fixed. Welcome, Ms. Vargas.
Yes, my name is Peggy Bockham and I am Rebecca Bockham's mother. And I have seen her face and bumps and ribs broken by what APD has been treating her. And not only her, but my kids. And because every time we mentioned Mary Hawn, APD was behind her murder. And so was Paul Kennedy. And this needs to stop, you know? And I hope that the chief of police that we get can do a better job because Ray Shore's never done nothing for this town. He needs to go back to Arizona where he came from and stay there because that's where he worked over there, you know? Not here, where in New Mexico, we were born in Ray Shore. And that's how we were all about back when we were growing up, you know? Not getting beat up by cops. And this is what we'll tell our kids in the future, you know? Oh, your dad, your mother got killed by a police officer? My husband got killed. I don't know. Sorry. Thank you.
Gina Vargas followed by Teresa Brown, Earl Michelin, and Frank Ortega. We have about 30 speakers here. And you don't have to take the entire two minutes. You do have two minutes. You don't have to take the full time there, but do the best you can to hear from everybody. So Gina Vargas, Teresa Brown, Earl Michelin, and Frank Ortega. I'm Ms. Vargas.
Attention.
Okay. So we'll go Teresa Brown. Are you Ms. Brown?
Yes.
All right, welcome.
My name is Teresa Brown. I am the sister of Kendall Carroll, who was shot by APD or SWAT in March on the 19th. I'm just here expressing my concerns about y'all justice. Like y'all have these police sergeants, lieutenants, captains out here. They killing people for nonsense, but at the same time, they giving other real criminals leeway. Like, my brother was shot twice, maybe more. They said he shot a cop. The cop is living. My brother's not living. My other brother's in jail, ready for court. Been to face life imprisonment. The cops don't care. They not investigating nothing. But since I seen my cousin, two weeks later, get killed by another gang member, I see everybody at my house, "Oh, don't you know this person?" For y'all to be cops, y'all supposed to have y'all own information. Y'all have CI informants out here. My babies are seven and five. I got beat up last week, jumped. My babies wouldn't even call nine more. The police are something bad in Albuquerque. They're not good news. Yes, like one of the ladies said, there are some that are good ones. But right now, all these bad ones is taking over. And it don't make no sense. If we don't make it safe here, y'all are gonna keep getting that act out from a lot of people. And it's gonna keep being murders and harm and all this because y'all, police ain't protecting us. But if it was to their families, they would feel the same way. I seen another barricade. They tased the man. My brother is dead. Every day that he is dead, it hurts me. Criminals out here doing everything they want, selling drugs and all this to kids. Needles at the parks. These kids don't know no police. They out here cussing the police. And, I mean, you can't black them up no more. Once you lose them, it's gone. Thank you.
Earl Michelin, Frank Ortega, then Nora Niyah. We actually have about four speakers here tonight. Looking forward to hearing from you. And you have two minutes, and you don't have to take the whole two minutes.
Council President, members, it is August. The chief Schultz is still here. Mayor Berry wants to keep him on as advisor to temporary chief banks. Are these two bonded, they hit that they cannot work without each other? We have a real fay in glass going on in these are the ones that are supposed to protect and keep citizens safe. It doesn't look like any of them have time to do their job. City council doesn't have the guts to outright fire Schultz. Schultz was made chief in '05. Our home was broken into in August of '05. We lived eight tenths of a mile from an APD substation. I called APD and they did fingerprint the scene. We were told they had good prints that should have the burgers soon. We had furniture, medical household items taken and extant $13,000. They had ID on them and none of them were ever recovered. Schultz is record of lies, moral decay in the department, excessive forceful officers, 18 men murdered by APD in 20 months, civil rights abuse, excessive expenditure, excessive travel and time away from his job at taxpayer expense. And you council members are afraid to fire him. And now you want to pay him more for the same than some of you in the mayor election. He also has two convictions for civil rights abuse. Your lack of responsibility for not firing or waste of tax money, lack of leadership and lies makes it easy for me to recommend to all I talk to. It is time to replace a mayor and council members that are not paying out for the citizens. The citizens are looking for elected officials to listen to citizen complaints. And that's in their best interest, not in elected officials' interest. When we moved here down north 5 years ago, we didn't even lock our doors. We had an officer across the street. His sons and my sons played together as a [BLEEP]. You can't do that now. You lock your doors, you're not even [BLEEP] at daytime. And we live in a gated community. And that's broken.
Frank Ortega, Nora Niyah, and Don Schrader.
Mr. President, Counselors. I'm here because I'm kind of dejected because Andres Valdez has fought very, very many years for civil rights and everything else. And yet, he puts in for the oversight committee and he's turned down. Well, Andres, you just, you're not a yes man. And we do have some people that will be on the, that will fight for justice, but they're overruled. And we're back to square one again. Who's running the show? That's all it comes down to. You guys, you guys don't deserve nothing. We run the show. And that's all we, that's what we get out of all of this. As far as, as far as my, myself, Andres is capable and has been. But you know what, Andres? You're a troublemaker. And as a troublemaker, you don't belong under. That's their way of thinking. Thank you.
Nora Niyah, then Don Schrader, and Paul Hay.
Mr. President, Council. I am here to tell you thank you for allowing Schultz to leave. I do not agree with that six-figure amount to paying him for killing all the people that he's, or telling his police to shoot first and ask questions later. That's wrong. Albuquerque should be indicted for that, only because we're allowing that to happen. As it stands, it's applicable. And of course, we're national for knowing that Levi Chavez also has been let free. And I know the police are not above the law. And if they are, they shouldn't be. I want to ask you about this task oversight. Looks like transparency is not transparent right now. Andres Valdez was purposely not chosen, or purposely not chosen. And of course, for whatever reason, actually, if it's politics, I understand Andres is not always agreeable to everything that is said. But basically, Andres is, has fought for civil rights for all the people in New Mexico and helps a lot of people. Andres may not be the right person in your mind, but in our mind, we know that he will fight for citizens oversight. And that's the key. That's why this hasn't worked. And that's my strong belief, that if you could at least consider citizens oversight and the right person for it that are sincere, I believe that would be ideal. Thank you very much.
Yes. Don Schrader, and Paul Hay, and Gary Chavez. Mr. Schrader.
68 years ago tomorrow, the United States atom bombed Hiroshima, Japan. The US atomic bombing of Hiroshima, August 6, 1945, murdered 166,000 people, over 50 times the number of people murdered in New York and Washington DC on 9/11/2001. The United States is the first and only nation to atom bomb cities of people. The US massacred mostly women and children in Hiroshima. Many of the men had gone to war. Friends did not recognize each other. Some no longer had faces. Eyes melted in their sockets. Noses and mouths opened holes. Many people completely evaporated. Some moved like scarecrows, holding their arms out from their bodies to avoid the agony of raw burns rubbing together. Sheets of skin trailed from fingertips. Some reached out to help the severely injured, then drew back their hands. They were holding gobs of charred flesh. Reservoirs of water filled with dead people who looked boiled alive. Is this treating other people as we want to be treated? Is this loving and doing good to our enemies? Is this conquering evil with good? Is this loving our neighbors as ourselves? Would you risk your job to damn publicly the weapons of hell on earth designed every day at San Diego Labs and Los Alamos Labs?
And Paul Hay, followed by Gary Chavez, and Bernard Maris.
Council President Lewis, members of the council. My name is Paul Hay. I'm here to speak to you about the late 2000 abortion issue. I'm not to speak to you about what side I am on. I have kind of made that pretty public already. But what I want to make sure of is that the citizens of this community have a right to vote on this initiative, whichever side they are on. And they have a right to vote on it during the mayor election on October 8. We don't need to kick this can down the road. We don't need to have a separate election that's going to cost this city hundreds of thousands of dollars that we don't have when we have an election coming up, October the 8th. And by mayor turnout last election, that I believe 18%, I think this will drive people to the polls in record numbers. We need to have this on the October 8th election. Now, I've heard that the city clerk is overwhelmed. She got 27,000 signatures. Only 12,000 are needed. And she doesn't know whether she can have it done by, I believe, August the 13th. Well, you know what? Get her help. Put more people in there. Get it done and get it on the ballot. As I said, we don't need to kick the can down the road. We don't need to spend more money that we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Chavez, followed by Maris and Nora Niyah. Mr. Chavez, who?
Well, back here again, especially with them beautiful floods we've been having during Barrelas. Getting tired of them. And we don't know when the next flood is gonna melt my houses down. Because every time we've been having them floods, and then the traffic that goes around to that area creates a total wave of water. So we need help. And then another story about this, about sandbags. I am no longer able to handle all them sandbags to be putting all the areas that I get flooded through. So I need help. Or somebody had come up with some good, some shit. The fire department passes by. Other folks go through there, they just wave at me. But what can I do? I need help. We need help during Barrelas. 800 Stover. Thank you.
Bernard Maris, followed by Mark Maris.
Good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Bernadette Modas and I reside in the Barrelas neighborhood. First of all, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Counselor Benton, Danny Hernandez from AMACA, and Ron Longmeadow from the Barrelas Neighborhood Association for taking the time to check on the flooding in Barrelas on Sunday, July 28. I'm sure they would have rather been doing other things on their Sunday. Our neighborhood previously flooded in 2006 and now again on July 26, 2013. Counselor Benton worked on council bill R06123 and the resolution was passed on September 6, 2006. There was also WUA R0622 establishing a process with the city of Albuquerque to coordinate testing, maintenance, and responsibilities with respect to the storm drainage system. We need the administration to take action and provide us with a report on what happened on July 26, 2013, what failed, and a plan for next time. We are requesting that the Neighborhood Association be provided with a written report on the testing and maintenance of the storm drainage system on a quarterly basis. Our biggest fear is that each time it rains, we will experience more flooding if something is not done to fix this problem. We are also asking if there is any way the administration will assist us in evaluating the damages and compensate us for damages. Thank you for your time and we look forward to your response.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Maris. I'm here to speak about the prevailing flood problem in Barrelas. And I would like to start by thanking Counselor Benton.
The area, no matter what happens there, whether it's one and a half feet or three and a half feet of water in there, traffic comes through that intersection, creates a tidal wave, so to speak, going up the street both ways on Stover. And what would be normal, you know, moderate amount of damage to our houses at a lower level becomes a severe amount of damage because all that weight splashes up in the front of everybody's house, including mine. Mr. Chavez and I have the two highest house on the blocks, but because of splashing, this came up all the way and we were in a war. We'd like some help with traffic, please.
Thank you. Counselor Benton.
Thank you. Mike.
Mr. President. I don't know that there's anyone else to speak with, maybe.
My name is Doug Dumeys.
Mr. Viski, just one more.
I did want to just, and I don't think I need to ask any questions, Mr. Reardon. I think we've contacted you and I know that you're working on, on looking at that situation. But yeah, even though the funds worked really well, there was really seemingly almost as bad as 2006 flooding in that particular street. And I do have another letter from Marsha McCann, who described the water, which is actually coming from the alley as well.
Especially at this time. That was 7:42. At that time, crisis team was on the way. Surchin was on the way. Minute later, arrived another unit, female police officer. Mid-minute, over 7:42, this man happened to be black, got shot nine times and killed. Where, my question, where is baton? Where is rubber bullet gun? Where is knee spray? Where is laser teaser, electronic teaser? Where is APD training? Nine times, that sounds like execution style.
Thank you. Susan Johnson.
That's right. Thank you.
Good evening, counselors. I'm here this evening to ask if you will post on the city council website. I'm sorry, I'm Susan Johnson and the vice president of the Rio Grande Boulevard Neighborhood Association. Do you know, Director Rude, sorry. Is that study on our website?
Mr. President, Counselor Myers, I believe we provided to council staff just today, so I'm not sure if the Tom and Eric G. has it to be able to post.
To post, okay. But we'll do it in haste, correct? We'll get it, we'll get it done as soon as possible.
But you still have it. But BD has it now.
Okay.
In hold, yes.
Great, thank you. And with regard to your follow-up meetings, I will get with you specifically. I'm not aware that there were follow-up meetings, but we will certainly do that.
Counselor Benton.
And I guess I was under the impression, Counselor Myers, that you and I would have ...
Mr. President, counselors, you know, the union president said the problem with the police is more training, need more training. You know, you know that's not true. She knows it's not true. There's a culture of corruption and lying that's been going on since Schultz took over in 2005. It's not going to change under Chief Banks, who's just another enabler. You know, the problem starts with the man on the 11th floor that sits in the mayor's chair who finds it necessary to either travel out of town or hide whenever big issues come up. You know, the mayor won't debate, hey, Norrie won't debate Pete Canelli, because he can't defend his record over the last three and a half years. It's been one of incompetence and irresponsible, right? You know, he's depending on big business money and Hatchet Man, McCusky, and those types of fool people again. And the people are not stupid and they won't be fooled again. You know, on the island of Albuquerque, which I've referred you to, you know, gets information from the cops and they tell you what the journal won't tell you and some of the TV people won't tell you. It's a fascist government. It really is. And you know, starting with hiring Schultz in 2005, we started fascism and various perfected it. You know, he claims that Alan Banks back there is a logical choice to be the deputy to see short. But if he's so confident, why does he need a $12,000 a month consultant do his jobs? I asked Alan Banks for, if for requested information on recordings and he ignored it because nothing but another Schultz. You know, I thanked Laura for putting the agenda item on a task force at the end of the meeting again, hoping that people would go home. I mean, that seems to be a trick that you guys already do. And it's an insult to people.
Andres Valdez, followed by Paul Nino, and Israel Chavez.
Counselors, Andres Valdez with Vasinos United. I'd like to first start by asking the council to seriously, to seriously consider a motion tonight opposing the six-figure check that the mayor wants to send the chief off with. You know, I think Counselor Lewis expressed it in public, how, you know, does the chief really deserve this? Does he, do we need a consultant that has actually acted in bad behavior? And, you know, the chief had to justify the murder of Vincent Wood or setting up Vincent Wood for murder. He had to justify by safe protocol, as I would. He had to, on his way out, justify police, APD officers, nature at play. Come on, guys. Please seriously consider that it's a slap in the face to send the chief off with a six-figure check. And the mayor needs to know this. It's about time we start to hold that mayor accountable. I'd like to also say that council staff, John Zaman, apparently in charge of working the details of putting together a police oversight task force, they did this when recommendations were not accepted by the MLK coalition. And they actually chose, they chose a committee whose names they would not reveal and had meetings, possibly in violation of the Open Meetings Act. We're requesting formally a new task force selection process that's open to the public. And, you know, this secret committee stuff just has to stop. And, you know, we can't have secret committees making decisions. You know, I'm not sure how that ever happened, but...
Thank you. Paul Nino, followed by Israel Chavez, followed by Daniel Rivera.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Paul Nino.
Quick question.
Counselor Benton.
To the sponsors of the legislation that created the task force, can you speak at all the process?
Counselor Winter. You want to talk about the process?
Yes, Counselor Benton. Well, when that bill comes up, we'd be glad to talk about the whole process and how it happened. And the list does look very impressive and so, but I did, I thought there was a note that MLK coalition wasn't represented, but I thought Mr. Littman, I believe, is a member. So, just a correction. Thank you.
Okay. Paul Nino.
Good evening. Good evening. I live on the corner of Ethan Stover and I'm one of the blood victims. This storm that happened this past month here, it started, right, say around 5, 6 o'clock. And I, you know, the water is rushing so fast, it's forcing the manhole covers to pop up. How heavy is the manhole cover? It's pretty heavy. It seems to me, well, the gentleman said the pumps were working, but we were in standing water till midnight, catching all the water rushing down from... but we were standing in water till midnight, catching all the water rushing down from up in the other areas. So we're the last ones to get drained out. The holding pond, it did hold water, but it didn't hold our water. Seems to me that they should put some kind of special.
Minimum wage, democracy by definition is being subverted and favors business interest over voters. The only argument against raising the minimum wage or enforcing it is that it would hurt businesses. However, a report released by the Center for Economic Policy and Research has shown, quote, "The experience of the first three cities to implement citywide minimum wage demonstrates that these laws can raise earnings of low-wage workers with no negative impact on employment." This study looked directly at Santa Fe. Enforce this minimum wage on behalf of those who need it the most. Include enforcement language, just like the Bernalillo County Commissioners have done. There are people right outside this building not being paid the current minimum wage. It is right and it is what will help the people of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Mr. President, do we know of any restaurant or any business at this point that's not paying the minimum wage? Or are we enforcing, do we know of any enforcement issues at this time, Mr. Tur?
Mr. President, no. We are in litigation with one. We are enforcing some alibi in regards to, we've had questions where people have called. And I have one person handling that. We've advised them, but we've given them the names of attorneys that will handle it and they have contact with them. And in reference to what I just heard about Bernalillo County, they do not enforce it through their county.
Specifically, no.
In the statutes, or in their legislation, and it was in the paper also, they do not enforce it.
Right. Okay, Councilman Rivera.
Thanks, Mr. Tur, and the gentleman spoke, I'm sorry, I don't remember the last name.
Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, do you know of any?
Actually, the organization Working America has examples. But these people can't come forward because of action that would be taken against them by their employers. It's a matter of them not being able to come forward because they don't have the resources. They don't have the nice desk to sit behind. They're working, people in Albuquerque who cannot stand up for themselves. And it is not, it is, it is a public issue, not a private issue. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be forced to take on private attorneys. It's a public issue.
I think, I think it would be instructive to have, Mr. Tur, to have some form of contact, a contact point in the city for citizens who may not want to expose themselves, as I just heard. And certainly, we should be the ones enforcing that law. Although, I do remember at the very beginning, you said it was not the city's job to enforce. I think it is. So how do we close this gap of misunderstanding?
Mr. President, Councilor Gardunio, my position still hasn't changed. We're not going to take on litigation that we're going to be enforcing. I do have private attorneys that I've been in contact with. They told me, actually, and they're willing to handle those, those kind of cases. In regard to, in regard to legal aid, I spoke with them. They are willing to take those type of cases. What you, what was represented a moment ago, Bernalillo County is not enforcing their wage. Bernalillo County specifically is not enforcing their wage. What I'm talking about in regard to, in regard to, I have a specific individual who fields these calls. And when we learn about it, we're notified and we have made contact with restaurants. They have not been able to support, the individuals who call have not been able to support that they aren't getting the minimum wage. There's been a misunderstanding. In regards to allegations that people won't come forward, how would we litigate this? If they want to call up, they have, we have a specific person. Everybody knows if you call up the front desk, it goes to a specific person. This person will field those calls. They'll discuss it with the individual if they want to bring litigation. But we can give them the name of the attorneys that have said they will represent.
You're asking minimum wage workers to bring litigation.
Sure, just a moment.
I think they're minimum wage workers.
Mr. Tur, thank you. I think we've, I think we've talked about the issues. Certainly, there's others that will be coming, on public comment about the issue too. So we're going to go ahead and move on. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Daniel Rivera, what did Daniel say?
Mr. President, I have one question from Mr. Rivera, just real quick.
Let me take this one question, Councilman Sanchez.
Did we not take the 66 diner to court, the city of Albuquerque?
Mr. President, Councilman Sanchez, we're in litigation with them right now. We've been in hearings with them. We are pursuing that case, correct?
But we aren't pursuing that case.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rivera, followed by Julian Coop and then Alex Frieden Smith. One, sir.
Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Dan Rivera. I'm the resident of District 9, we affectionately call the High Ground. You know, we come to.
Hello, good evening, councilors. My name is Michaela Laca and I was born and raised here in New Mexico. And now I'm proud to be raising my family in Albuquerque. I am the policy director at Young Women United. We're a community organizing project by and for young women of color. I'm here today because we learned that those working to ban access to abortion through the city ballot measure process and their out-of-state visitors would be making an appearance at this meeting. The decision to end a pregnancy is deeply personal and often complex. We cannot stand in the woman's shoes and cannot make this decision for her. This decision should be made between a woman and her family, guided by her faith and in the care of her physician. To be clear, women's access to health care, our bodies and our lives should not be used as political grandstanding. Our Albuquerque voters and families deserve more. This should not be a partisan debate or ideological battle. We must put the rights and well-being of New Mexico women and families first. Whether this election happens in October or November, we will be ready. We, New Mexico women, families and allies, are building a campaign, Respect Albuquerque Women, to ensure that in our state, we maintain access to safe and legal abortion. Thank you.
Are you Miss Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Again, if your name is calling, if you come and sit in the front row there, Jeff White, Bud Shaver, Christina Acuarza, or next.
You probably can't really see the picture real well, but it's from the Trayvon Martin, after the verdict. It says, "Smash racist cops in Village Gilantiz. No justice, no peace." I'm here today in support of many of the things that people have talked about. And I'm here as a citizen of Albuquerque. Many of you are elected officials, just to remember that. And also to remember your heart when you're sitting in that chair up there. I, I do not like what happened to Vincent Wood. Mental health issues is a big thing here in that thing. And then I'm also here to invite many of you to go to your national night outs tomorrow and have heart when you go. And to remember all the young people that are there, to remember all the citizens that are there. And I also invite all of you to ABQIF, which is in the International District, and much racism happens there in different ways. And I also, on R 13207, I would like to request that there be a new task force selection process open to the public. And I am in support of Mr. Andres Valdez because I know he's done much work. Here, standing here as a mother, standing here as a human, it doesn't matter what color we are, I could put this paper in front of my face. I want you to understand, we're all part of the human race. So whatever decisions you make, think as of yourself as a human, no matter what color you are, no matter what religion you are. Please come here. When you come here, remember you're here representing the city. You're representing many people. Please, look into your heart.
Jeff White, Bud Shaver, and then Christina, Christina Acuarza, I believe. Jeff White and Bud Shaver. Mr. White.
No, not White, Bud Shaver, Jeff White, he left.
Jeff White is not here? Sorry, Mr. Shaver.
Honorable President, Vice President, council members. As a resident of Albuquerque, I have a ten little son who was born here in the city. My child, my daughter has been raised here a few years. And a lot of issues that we brought up about out-of-state, out-of-town actions as far as, I think, giving one more in child protection ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is the last item on the agenda for tonight. So this is establishing the ad hoc police oversight task force. I move a de-pass, naming this, and this is naming the members.
Motion, second for de-pass.
So, Ken, I think we have some folks sign up to speak. So if you want to go ahead and public comment first and then we'll go through what our process was.
Sure. We'll go to public comment. Okay with that, Councilman Gardunio? First is Nora Naya, followed by Silvio Delangelo, and then Andres Valdez. Miss Naya, move. Okay, Mr. Delangelo.
Mr. President, councilors, you know, task force members you chose in secret, with few exceptions, an insult to the people of the city whose family members, friends were shot by APD and those hundreds of others who were denied justice by Ms. Hammer or investigators in a corrupt process. You know, Ms. Hammer came before you claiming that great improvements have been made since she was hired. That's a joke. And if you ever took the time to watch the meetings, you would know it's a joke. You know, on your, on your task force, which I understand was selected by the council staff who never even attended a POC meeting or a Long-Term Planning Commission meeting, you even had two former APD officers. One, a former counselor of mine and a police captain, had a history of being an APD enabler while in the city council. You know, the only criteria that in the selection of these people is nobody ever attended a POC meeting, a Long-Term Planning Commission meeting. Isn't that amazing? You pick the most uninformed people to be the people that will work for you. And no doubt, they need two public meetings to know what we already know. I hope that, you know, I hope to be appointed, I knew I wouldn't, Andres did too. You know, I was fired from doing my job on the Albuquerque Citizens Team along with two others for doing our job because rewards, punishment is what you're rewarded for. I gave you a CV with 100 citizen complaints. Did you bother to look at them and see how corrupt the process is? Did you bother to look at the proposed changes? Did I take a lot of time to write 20 pages of changes for the ordinance? Did you bother to look at that? Did you care? You need to reject this, go back to the drawing board, refer this. It's an insult. It really is an insult to people.
Council, Council Jones.
Thank you. Mr. Delangelo, do you have a question?
Certainly, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Mr. Delangelo, did you apply to be on this task force?
Yes, I did.
How did you do that?
In numerous messages, I certainly did.
Did you fill in the application that was required?
I didn't think there was one required. But it was pretty clear in numerous messages, I did apply.
No, I was just curious if you.
Is this a technicality?
Yes, it is. You did not fill out the application.
Oh, is that why I went and said?
Thank you, Mr. Delangelo, just curious.
Well, that's cute. Thank you, Miss, Miss Jones.
You're so very welcome.
Andres Valdez.
Thank you, councilors. I too would like to express concern how the task force was selected. Apparently, there was some secret committee that, or we thought it was some secret committee that had decided who these task force members were, apparently now, after speaking to some staff, that it was, it was, I guess, a staff decision. Nevertheless, we're a little concerned that that could have become a, you might call it a de facto committee that made a decision which could be in violation of the Open Meetings Law. It might not, just to say. My, my big concern is I have, I've been at this process many, many years, many years. I've sat in two citizen ad hoc committees and, which is part of my credentials. I think the writing in this thing is probably very small where you can't see it. But it's a letter written from city council thanking me for being on a, on a citizens ad hoc committee, on a task force to review the police oversight ordinance. I was, when the police oversight commission was going to be formed, the city council was faced with who shall we get to review and look at these recommendations? And they came up with Eileen Luna and Sam Walker. Well, it was I who knew Sam, that knew Eileen Luna from a National Coalition on Police Accountability, who recommended Eileen Luna to city council, who put together the Luna-Walker report. So I've been at this a long time. I'm highly qualified. I mistakenly told Councilor Gardunio I was the best qualified. That's probably not the case. But I'm up there and I sure would like your support to be on this committee. And I think I deserve it for the people, not, I'm not self-serving. Thank you.
Thank you. So motion, second for approval of R 207. Discussion, questions, Council Benwood.
I guess I'll just repeat my question from previously. If the sponsors could describe how the, how the names were. We know down from this very long list of applicants. Absolutely, Mr. President, Council Benwood. I think you all know that we received 115 formal applications for the 10 positions, the 11 positions that, that we decided to have on this council. And if you remember, I think we tried to go with a group from the University of New Mexico to help pick who was going to be on this committee. It got very political. They backed out and decided not to. So Council Gardunio and myself got together and thought, well, how can we, how can you do this and make this work? We had another UNM group that could have been considered political, that wanted to do it. So we just thought, decided that the best way to do it is to do it as non-political as we can do it. So, you know, Council Gardunio, sometimes when we vote on issues, we vote differently. And so our whole concern is what we were trying to do is to make sure that it was a fair and balanced committee. And so we got my policy analyst, we got Council Gardunio's policy analyst, and the assistant director of council staff to go through this 150 applications. They didn't have any dogs in this fight. Their, their only, the only thing that we told them was make sure that it is balanced and it is fair. And that there's totally different members of the community are involved in this. It's not just one section of the community or another. And so they worked very, very hard. They went through all 115. There was certain criteria about, that we had in the bill about who was going to pick. And I think that what came out is we picked expertise from public defenders to civil liberties. The whole, the total aspect of this, of this committee. Couple of police officers, some retired, but it got the whole balance. And I thought to make sure that this will work, it has to be fair and it has to be a balanced committee. And I thought the council staff that did this did a great job. They didn't come to me and say, look, we've got this, we've got this member. Who do you want to be on the member? They didn't come at the Council Gardunio. They took it in the realm. In fact, some of these members, I'm aware of who they are. A lot of them, I'm not aware of who they are. So they, I, I think they did a really good job and I'm very proud of the work that they did do on choosing this. I think it is very balanced and I think they will help lead the group. We're going to have three public meetings. They're there to get input and then to hopefully bring back things to this council that we can look into a new ordinance. So I'll turn it over to Council Gardunio.
Thank you, Council Benwood. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council Winter. I think that was the utmost resolve we wanted. Council Winter and I, as he said, many times don't agree politically or even legislatively. But one thing we agreed upon in that was, we want it to be fair. When it came to choosing who the, the committee was going to be, the only instruction we had was, be fair, look at every single name that comes in, and window those folks down to the number that we need. Some of it was HR-related. In other words, there were some criteria that was used to vet some of the folks. Some were able to, to continue, as it were, some were not. That was one of the ways that the numbers were, were narrowed. Everyone was vetted for what they had to offer. And then given, as Councilor Winter, the criterion that was, who fits best in these categories that we had set out as legislation, whether it was public defender, whether it was a community member, a retired police officer, whatever it was, that these folks would fit into those categories. that these folks would fit into those, uh, categories. Now, do I know every one of these folks? No. And do I think that every one of those people I would have picked? Probably not. But the instruction was, you folks, we trust you to be fair, to be balanced, and to bring forward names that I think would fit these, uh, areas of interest. And at no time, I know for myself, and I have positive for Counselor Witter's part because he, he was out, um, fishing, so he didn't. We wanted to make sure we didn't influence the process. And to the last minute, we wanted to make sure that we didn't go running to folks and say, "Oh, by the way, did X apply?" And if they did, you know, we, I want, or we want that person to be in the committee or the, uh, task force. That was not the issue. And I hope that I'm speaking correctly when I say that there was no pressure, if you want to use that word, no influence, no coercion, certainly on our part, to make sure that certain people were on the task force or kept off the task force. Whoever came forward were the folks that we felt were fair, and will look at the issues correctly. Besides, it'll be a public process. This is not something that these folks will decide in some smoke-filled back room. It'll be a public process. I think at this point, we have three public forums that are going to be held. But I hope to move it to four public forums if we can, so that we can hit all four quadrants. Again, that way, we can make sure that folks from throughout the city have an opportunity to respond or to at least have input.
I think Mr. Zaman served on that committee too. Would you like to, Mr. Zaman, would you like to share any, any further on the selection of this committee?
Uh, Mr. President, councilors, I'd just like to reiterate what Counselor Witter and Counselor Gardunio have said, and that is that there was no pressure brought to bear. The instructions that were given to staff was to come up with a committee that was fair and balanced. A committee that if someone who was filing with CPC looked at the committee, they felt that there were members on there that would be empathetic and understand their perspective. Or that if an officer on the street looked at this committee, they felt that there would be members on the task force that would be empathetic and understand their point of view. And so that was our charge, and I believe our recommendation to you fulfills that charge. We do have a variety of people. We have public defenders, as Counselor Witter said. We have former police officers. We've got, um, clinical psychologists who have trained, uh, and, and counsel police officers in crisis and post-crisis intervention. We've got the ACLU on here. We've got a very good mix. And to a person, we, we have spoken with everyone who's on this list. We've gotten their background checks. We've got their CV and their resumes. To a person, every person on here has said, "We're going to be objective and fair, and we're just going to try to improve the system as best we can."
Thank you. Counselor Janice Arnold-Jones.
Mr. President, thank you. You know, as I looked at this, um, I actually was more than pleased with the diversity, depth and breadth of experience. It was dumber than I expected. Um, but one of the things that bothered me is, and I trust that you've already asked that everybody is willing to serve should we go through with this, but the first thing that popped in my mind was, where are the alternates? And I'm wondering if, because we have something very important to do, you have a very interesting pool of people, it would seem to me that identifying three alternates right this minute would certainly, or as soon as possible, would certainly aid our process, because there's an important job to be done. Stuff happens. And, and that was my only thought. I am not quite sure what the next step is, but I think we ought to think about it.
Counselor Sanchez.
Okay.
I concur with, uh, Counselor, uh, Janice Arnold-Jones on this initiative. I think that because of the importance of this war, that there should be at least three alternatives. Because there's no guarantees with this many members that they're, they're going to make the meetings. And I think that if they are at that particular meeting, then one of those alternatives will have the possibility of filling in positions. And I have one more question for John, because I know that, uh, Tony Durand, who attends a POC meetings on behalf of the Albuquerque City Council, did not serve on the selection committee on the recommendations of the individuals that were selected. Although I do believe that we've made some really, really good selections. I do have some concerns regarding the issue of Andres Valdez. I know that when I was running for the city council seat back in nineteen ninety-four, when we were trying to form the POC, that Vicinos United was one of the most instrumental groups in trying to form the Police Oversight Commission. And he's been involved not just today, but for many, many years. And my concern was, you know, of all people that didn't get appointed, you know, why was he not selected for this committee? Being that he's been involved for so many years. He's been at POC meetings. He's been here at city council meetings. Why was he left out?
Uh, Mr. President, excuse me, Counselor Sanchez. I, I hope that Mr. Valdez not being on the recommendation doesn't come across as a negative comment on his qualifications or on the good work that he's done in the past. We had a hundred and fifteen applications for eleven positions. We did our best to find balance. In, in this case, what, what we would hope is Mr. Valdez would continue to attend the meetings. Uh, perhaps if there's an alternate, uh, scenario, that Mr. Valdez could be an alternate. I would, we would encourage him to stay involved throughout the process, both through going to the town halls and participating with the, uh, with the task force. Thank you.
Are there any discussion questions on, on the bill? Counselor Gardunio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, John, and, uh, Counselor Arnold-Jones. I think the recommendation is a good recommendation. In fact, I believe it was an oversight on our part. Uh, in fact, the very first piece of legislation had that format more or less. It was a lesser number. It was seven members of the task force with three, I don't know, alternate, we, for term, three other folks that would attend, primarily for their expertise. But I think that, uh, having removed that, we, at least on my part, I have to say, I think dropped the ball. I think we really forgot that we needed to have that. I mean, we'd have that with almost every other situation. Why we didn't do it for this, uh, I don't know. But apologies if that's necessary. And furthermore, I think that those three folks, if it's three folks that we decide on, I don't know that we can decide that tonight, but maybe, can we do an amendment tonight to uh, include three alternates, not necessarily know who they are right this minute, but at least the mechanism for allowing three alternates to be part of it.
Mr. President.
Counselor Harris.
Gosh, I really objected to that. I mean, we've been at this for a long time. This bill has been languishing for months. Uh, but the real reason why I objected to that is because we had specific criteria for all these different members. So how on earth can you have alternates? Because what if, um, what if Craig Lloyd didn't show up, then Ann Grass Valdez is going to fill in for Craig Lloyd, be it?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, I believe you'd need alternates from each of the categories. You'd need at least six alternates.
And I don't think we'd do that as an amendment on the fly. I hope we need to think about this.
Mr. Gardunio. Well, I disagree with, uh, Counselor Harris. I don't think what we're asking is that we make the recommendations. I'd rather set up a mechanism by which we can come up with alternates. And maybe three's not the magic number, but whatever number it is that it is fair, it is balanced. And, uh, as, uh, Mrs. Zaman says, maybe we do have to look at the categories, if you will, or the, uh, parameters that we set forward for membership, that we would have alternates in each one of those categories. And I would be fine with that. Uh, what I don't want to do is, um, keep languishing, but I also don't want to hurry into naming someone just because we think we should do it immediately.
Counsel Witter.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think, um, if we can go ahead and pass this resolution tonight, then we'll have another resolution to come up with the three alternate, alternate.
I think it's about six, because of the difference in six categories.
We, we can look at that to see. And then, and the alternates, the alternates can also attend the meetings, um, just like they were part of the committee, and somebody drops off and they would take their place.
Okay, Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, just, just a thought about that procedurally. I agree that if we're going to have alternates, it should be six alternates from each of the, the subject areas. And, uh, as part of that bill, you know, that, that there might be, um, well, some language about how, you know, let's say I've got to miss a meeting and I'm one of the, the regular delegates, then, then probably giving them the opportunity to choose a, you know, from, from the list of alternates and so forth. Seems like it makes sense, because it is hard for, to, to get the same level of people in the room every time. And, and it is such momentous work that they're going to.
So no, no amendment on this bill. Uh, that would be a later resolution. So it's still on R two oh seven. Counselor Gardunio.
I urge your support.
Counsel Witter.
I urge your support.
Motion a second for approval for a due pass of R two oh seven. Those in favor say yes?
Yes.